Good evening. I'd like to call the January 16, 2018 meeting of the University Heights City Council to order. Would the Clerk of Council please call and roll?
Mr. Rock? Mr. Weiseman?
Here.
Mr. Erdel? Mrs. Pardee?
Here.
Mr. Sims?
Here.
Mrs. Cameron?
Present.
Mrs. Weiss?
Is there a motion to excuse Council members John Rock, Michelle Weiss, and Bill Erdel?
Second.
Any discussion?
We know that Mr. Erdel will be joining us. He was held up. And that Mr. Rock is... I don't know his...
Yeah, Mr. Rock is a family medical emergency.
That's it. So...
Yes. Is there any further discussion? Yes, there was a motion by Michelle Pardee, second by Councilwoman Cameron.
Mr. Weiseman?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mr. Sims? Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
She carries. Will we all take a stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. I'm not clear whether the council members had ample opportunity to review the minutes at this juncture.
We just received them, correct?
Yes.
I did not have a chance to read them. I would prefer to table them and approve next time.
Very good. Do we have a motion for that?
I move to table the minutes.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing done, we call a roll, please.
Mr. Weiseman?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
The next item on our agenda is the portion of the meeting reserved for comments from the audience. Is there anyone from the community who would care to speak and address the council this time? I assume Mr. Howser is here. And, Mr. Howser, we do have you on the agenda. So, we could hear you now, or we could... Usually, this is the time that it's reserved for our audience members. Well, why don't we do this? Mr. Howser, your time is valuable. Why don't we, if we could move to amend the agenda, or simply have Mr. Howser at this point address us? He's our new county council representative that we just appointed this past Thursday. He was interested in addressing the city and addressing us, and I was very interested in having and hearing from him. So, we did place him on the agenda. Do we need to move to amend the agenda, or can we simply have him speak at this juncture? Okay, that's great.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Mr. Howser, would you please come to play?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, University Heights. Thank you, Mayor Brennan, for inviting me today. I see all my good friends, Councilwoman Cameron, Councilman Weiseman, everyone working with Michelle Weiss, my previous fellow at the county, Councilwoman Pardee, please sit over here and say hello. So, good friends here in University Heights. I particularly love University Heights. And so, just want to let you guys know that I plan to continue the partnership that Councilman Harrison had already started with county government in University Heights. I look forward to being involved. I look forward to coming to any more council meetings and also to learn more about what you've got planned to do in University Square. So, please keep me updated. I plan to be a partner. I plan to continue moving this district forward. If you have any questions for me, please let me know. Please contact me. My email address is mhouser, M-H-O-U-S-E-R, at titlecounty.us. I'm available. I'm open. Please let me know if I can do anything out of... Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming this evening. We appreciate your input. Okay, next on the agenda is reports and communications from the mayor. There's a lot I have to say, but I will try to be economical and not waste time on those. The first two weeks have certainly flown by. On the first day, we named a new interim chief of fire. And there is a resolution before us this evening with regard to that. The agenda item refers to restoring the fire chief to the civil service rank of captain. It's worth explaining that because interim chief Perkel has been named on interim basis, one of the things that the interim chief and I discussed as a condition to his appointment would be that when the time comes for opening up the fire chief position to application by candidates both within and without the fire department, that should he either elect not to be considered, or should we, as a city, elect to go a different direction in naming the permanent fire chief, that interim chief Perkel be allowed to return to the rank of captain and return to the University Heights Fire Department as such. So, this is a way of ensuring that he is not out of the job. Our city, that we crack down on absentee landlords and other housing violations. And there are numerous matters that have been brought to housing court where I have discovered our housing department has been put in a position to date of having our housing inspectors serve not only as the witness representing our city, but really as our city represented without the benefit of an additional advocate present to advocate on behalf of our city, as I would normally expect. Being an attorney myself, I was surprised to learn that for the most part, we did not have counsel present at our housing court matters to assist our housing inspectors and to represent the city and its interests. There are numerous things that an attorney can do and ought to do and will be able to do, represent the city in housing court, that are simply beyond what we should expect of our housing inspectors to do. This is not something that I am going to blame our prosecutor for, our outgoing prosecutor, or our law director for. This is simply the way business was done under the previous administration. And in my review of things, both independently and also the consultation with the court, it seemed to me that if we want to increase enforcement and be serious about that, that we need to have our prosecutor or other legal representative present at housing court matters. With that, there are numerous opportunities for additional enforcement at our court with the criminal docket. There are... There's only so much that we can do in respect to crime. That is to say, that we do not control how many people shoplifted naysies. We do not control the number of assaults that occur. But we do have a responsibility that whether we're prosecuting crime or bringing housing matters to the court, that we sufficiently staff and sufficiently resource our court system to represent our city and to serve our residents. And that is one of the reasons why we are pleased to go in a new direction with respect to our prosecution and why we will be considering and formalizing the appointment of Michael Astrid to prosecutor on behalf of the city of University Heights. We'll be talking more about Michael Astrid later in the agenda. But Mr. Astrid is a former common pleas judge, one who distinguished himself, who unfortunately is no longer on the bench through no fault of his own, but simply due to the proverbial name game that happens in this city. And political commentary about that can be reserved for another time. But his absence from the bench at this time, I believe personally, is a loss to the bench in Kalamata County, but it can certainly be argued here in University Heights. Moving along. For the Martin Luther King Day holiday, Kelly Thomas, our clerk of course, and I... Excuse me, our clerk of council, and I attended a breakfast reception at the Cleveland Clinic on Friday. I also attended yesterday events at the Malts Museum. And with Black History Month coming up, I would like to see mayor, council, and our joint resolution together renewing our commitment to nondiscrimination in the city of University Heights. I'm pleased to announce that a University Heights representative has been reappointed to Moakha, the Northeast Ohio Area Coordinating Committee, which is a very descriptive name, but basically it's a five-county transportation committee handling transportation issues throughout the region. Our previous mayor served on the Moakha Board and also served as the Assistant Treasurer. County Executive Armin Bhuddish is now the president of Moakha, and he has extended the invitation to me to serve on the board, and I accepted. As an alternate to that board, we have the opportunity to name an alternate so that our city can be represented and our interests can be represented by either a primary or a second person. Our service director, Jeff Corney, has served previously as our alternate, and I asked him again if he would be willing to serve in that capacity, and he has so agreed. So, I'm pleased to report that University Heights and will continue to represent Eastern Kalamata County on this board. There also happen to be three committees of our own that are going to require the oral appointments. The Board of Zoning Appeals has three seats that are... Two of which could be reappointments, and that is yet to be determined. And one of which will be a new appointment, which is given that the seat that was occupied by the mayor is now, per the ordinance that was passed in the last meeting, going to be filled to professionalize and arguably de-politicize the BCA. So, anybody who is interested in serving in Board of Zoning Appeals, I would encourage them to contact me, as I consider candidates also. If anybody on the council has anybody that they would like to suggest, I am certainly open to suggestions. Given the regularity that they meet, it is my intention, especially under the ordinance, because council has to approve that nominee and given their meeting schedule, it is my intention to have a nominee or up to three nominees to present to council by the next council meeting, so that we will be acting rather quickly in determining who is staying on and who is being added. In addition, we have on the planning commission the retirement of Edward Reichev, who served on our commission, I think, for 40 years, some very extended period of time, long period of service. But we will need to be naming somebody to the planning commission to replace Mr. Reichev or to certainly fill that seat. How replacement is even the appropriate word for somebody who has served our city as long as he has. And again, we will be looking for people who are interested to serve. Finally, there is a fair housing committee that was created by ordinance but has never actually been constituted and filled. And upon consultation with our law director, it appears that there is cause at this point to fill that committee so that anybody who has administrative proceeding that needs to be heard by that committee can be so heard. There are three seats on that committee. They are three-year terms. And it would be our intention to have one person enter a three-year term, a second person enter a partial two-year term, and a third person then filled to fill a partial one-year term. That way, we will have a rolling appointment every year to add to the fair housing committee. So, again, if you or if you know someone who might be interested in serving on that committee, please let me know. Moving on. Swenson's has been wildly successful. If you've driven by any time of day or night and looked, they have been busy. It's been gang busts over there. I do understand that there are some lingering concerns by a small number of nearby Beechwood residents in that vicinity. And to that end, I have promised, going back to even before I was sworn in, that I would be willing to meet with people who are concerned or their representatives to discuss those issues and see what can be done with respect to addressing their concerns. So, I'm pleased to announce that coming up on February 6th, I've arranged to host a meeting with the mayor of Beechwood, Martin Horace, with the vice mayor, James Posh, and the CEO of Swenson's, Jeff Flowers, here at City Hall. So, we are going to need to discuss those residential concerns and see what the possible resolutions may be. The next thing I want to bring up are some IT issues that occurred. They actually predated my being sworn in to serve as the mayor. On the 29th of December, we had an issue regarding our firewall. Apparently, there was some sort of power surge or power outage that occurred that... I'm not even trying to say technically what happened, except that we did lose email capacity and the firewall itself needed to be, as it turned out, removed and simply replaced. There seems to be, in some respects, a lack of institutional knowledge with respect to some passwords on some parts of our IT system. And part of that has simply been, from my observation, as somebody coming in here only in the last two weeks, based upon a piecemeal approach that has been taken in many of the functions and tech functions that we have here at City Hall. To that end, we ended up having retained emergency service to repair the firewall, address some email issues, address some other issues. And some of the things I discovered in the process, I learned that our City Hall doesn't actually have, for most of our departments, an actual server that is used for saving information. We do have a Dropbox account. There are things that we have done to get by, but we have not implemented the better practice of having a server that we save things to where all the departments are saving their information. The police department does have its own server with functions that are separate. We need to be kept separate from a main City Hall server. But that all said, it is something I wasn't expecting to find coming in on day one. And even the first day leading up to the meeting that we had with John Carroll, there were materials that I don't think we were sure we were going to have. And thankfully, Kelly was able to come through in the clutch and make things happen, despite some of the computer problems we were having. So, we made it look pretty good, I think, but we were having a bit of a crisis backstage. So, there's no reason that that should continue to be our way of doing business. And like our finance department, and Bill on our finance department, we're very good about ascertaining some possible people with whom we can collect this for a server. But at risk of taking a piecemeal approach, when I intend not to take a piecemeal approach to some of these larger picture issues, it's also come to my attention that in addition to the server, we need to have a regular service plan in place for IT service and for service related to our phone system. And that brings me to the phone system. We have a phone system that appears to be, by estimation, over 20 years old. It's a Northell phone system. And if you follow telecom at all, you'll know that Northell's been out of business for many years. The phones that we use here are not available as new phones. Any new phones that we have brought in are aftermarket phones or phones that are bought on the aftermarket and the used phone market. And there are limitations to the system that we presently have. For instance, there is a caller ID on my phone, but I can't see phone numbers on it. And at the same time, there are limitations to the phone tree. And part of that, those limitations are, we're still trying to figure out how to change the phone tree so that the property owner's name is listed in administrative options. Fortunately, some of the phone messages that are out there say simply, "You've reached the desk of the fire chief." So, remember the fire chief is, that remains applicable. But further, we've also discovered, I've also discovered, that we're out of phone extensions to give to anybody coming in who needs to have an extension. And there ought to be, there will be some people that we've discussed, positions we've discussed creating and infilling, and we need to be able to give them phone extensions so that when you call the city, you can get a hold of our economic development director. So, these are things that we need to be looking at replacing as well. And it would seem that we're probably going to go in the direction of preparing our MVP for all of these services so we can have them in process. Not necessarily from just the companies that we are familiar with, but also from anyone who would be interested in doing business with our city. So, this is something the council should be looking for in the near future and a direction that we need to go. We're going to make our base of operations ready for the big changes that we all intend to appear in the city. Speaking of that base of operations, I do want to take a moment to address our City Hall. This is a beautiful room that we're in, but this City Hall was built in 1925. The police department, 1953. The fire department's in the 40s. And bits and pieces of the service department, whatever, they've been built at different times. And while they have been functional, they... There are some glaring things that were obvious to me as a private citizen and have become increasingly obvious to me since becoming mayor. As a private citizen, it was obvious to me that there is no elevator to this room. And we do have a device on the stairs for people who are in wheelchairs that is operated by the fire department. I've always felt uncomfortable watching it being used. I would never want to have to ride it myself. And here we are, nearly 30 years after the implementation of the Americans with Disabilities Act, and this is what we're still using. But further, going through our various departments and going through City Hall, I made some other discoveries. And these discoveries are not to blame anyone. They are simply to report on the state of conditions as we have found them. Our service department has no locker rooms for female employees. At the moment, we don't have any female employees in the service department. But were we to hire one, we would have to figure out where we would put it, and there really isn't readily room for a locker room for female employees. Likewise, in the fire department, we don't have any female firefighters at the time, for the time being, but we don't have any facilities set up to handle them either. Likewise, in the police department, we do have a women's locker room, but it is out of the police garage. And it's not really of the same level as the men's locker room. And I've seen the men's locker room. It's nothing to rattle about either. But our facilities, when we're looking at the space that we have here, the space that's available for potential male employees, and in the era of hashtag Me Too, in the era of gender equality and wanting to create opportunities, we are not ready, here in University Heights, with these facilities, to make the kinds of, to consider certain candidates for... We can consider them, but then we will have to make some radical changes in order to be able to accommodate them. And these are things that require addressing sooner rather than later. And there are a number of citizen committees that I intend to create. I'm going to be, we're rolling those out on our website next week. But one of them you can be certain of will be a committee to advise on future municipal facilities and a future City Hall. Something that we're going to need to do sooner rather than later. There is going to be an executive session regarding the real estate matter related to that. We can expect a motion on that later. There are numerous items on the agenda I could comment on. I feel like I've spoken for a very long time already, so I'm going to only comment on one of them at this point, and that is item H. Adopting a moratorium on the enforcement of the prohibition against the three unrelated persons living together as set forth in codified ordinance section 128.10B1 for a period expiring on May 31st, 2018, to offset any policy issues in connection with the ordinance. I think this is an ordinance that a lot of people have strong feelings about. But what I think the strong feelings are related to is making sure that we are all good neighbors, including our renters being good neighbors. And I think that the three unrelated person ordinance sets out to achieve something, but maybe doesn't do it as artfully as it ought to. And I think that we, as a city, should be looking at whether or not that ordinance truly achieves what we're seeking or whether there are other things that we ought to be doing to regulate, if you will, behavior or other things that truly are causing the problems between neighbors. We should be looking at whether or not it's a three unrelated person issue or it's a number of people per bedroom issue or it's a number of cars parked on the street versus parked off-street being the issue. And because these are things that I feel like we should be looking at sooner rather than later, I think it's inequitable to be enforcing the ordinance during the review period because it may be that the changes we make would displace people that... Well, that would be displacing people that may not necessarily be displaced depending on the changes we make. At the same time, I want to be very clear that this moratorium would not, should not be construed in any way to be anything that any landlord or tenant should rely on for any kind of future, because the law is what the law will be when we determine it with regard to this. And until then, it is, there is a prohibition on more than three people living, unrelated, living at a rental property. It is simply that we would put a moratorium on the enforcement of that through the end of May while we review it. So, that is everything I have at this time. Thank you. So now, we will move on to the agenda. I'm going to ask that we take the agenda out of order because there are some items we want to wait for Mr. Erdel to appear on. One of those items would be, if we could skip ahead to item D. Do we need to make a motion to amend the order on the agenda, or are we simply going to take these out of order?
You can do it by affirmation or by motion. As long as everyone agrees.
Okay.
I agree.
Agreed.
Okay. All right, very good. Then we will proceed immediately to item D on the agenda. Ordinance 2018-03 authorizing the mayor to appoint and enter into an agreement with Joseph R. Chuni, care of GPD group, as the city engineer. This is on first reading. Mr. Chuni, did you want to address the council or the city on this matter, while you're...
I can't.
Great.
This is just our annual agreement, and this year, we have the wrong reasons.
Excellent.
We've been the engineer here since 1976, I believe it was, or '77. But it's a yearly renewal of the contract, so...
Very good. Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Chuni? Thank you, Mr. Chuni. Okay, if we... If there's no objection, we'd like to consider item F, Resolution 2018... Oh, that's not emergency, so... Very good. We will proceed instead to item G, Authorization to Purchase One Global M3 Mechanical Room Street Sweeper Through the ODOT Walker Purchase Program Reimburse Through the ANO RSD Stormwater Cost Share Program. Mr. Corney, would you please present?
Yes, Mr. Chuni, thank you. This is a request to purchase a new street sweeper replacing our old Belgian street sweeper, which is now 16 years old and in need of repair. The Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District offers a stormwater management program, which they collected dollars from our community. And they make 25% of those collected dollars available to the community for stormwater program. The program started several years ago. There was a little break in the program. These dollars are currently available in that program. And I came to council, I think, about six months ago asking for authorization to file the grant process with the regional sewer district. We have since done that. They have accepted it, and they have authorized us to proceed with the purchase of the street sweeper with reimbursement coming from those stormwater dollars at the regional sewer district. So, right now, I'm respectfully requesting authorization to purchase a global M3 street sweeper through the state cooperative purchase program from Amtech Company, a whole equipment building, in the amount of $185,936.
Send those numbers again, please.
Dollar amount?
Yes.
On the memory I provided you, $185,000...
process and requests that this is in the 2018 budget, capital budget?
We had spoken about it right in 2017 and for 2018.
Okay, so we'll have it in this year's budget as one of the items.
It'll be a reimbursement, so it is net zero, but correct.
Will we be continuing with that list of items that you did start with us?
I will, at the Service and Utilities Committee.
Yes.
We assemble again, have a list available for 2018.
Right, thank you.
Vice Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Corney, you said that this money was earmarked for stormwater runoff or to help with stormwater runoff?
Correct.
How does a street sweeper help with stormwater runoff issues?
A street sweeper collects most of the debris on the street that would get into a catch basin and then the dump into the local stream. So they consider that an advantage to collect those asphalt, running things, the oil and the other things that are on the street surface and dispose them in our waste street.
And how much money per year are we... Might be available to us with this program?
I think we are collecting about $72,000 a year in that program.
So this represents how many years of...
A little more than a year. Yeah, two years.
Two years. I'm just thinking ahead to next year, what are the other things that are available? Is tree planting, for instance, something that would qualify for assisting with stormwater runoff? Are there other things besides?
I would think if you're doing a tree planting or vegetation planting that would limit stormwater from getting into the stormwater system and or filter it like a rain garden, it would qualify. As for tree planting, just our regular programmed down tree lawns, probably not. They're looking for more stormwater related issues. We could use it for stormwater maintenance, should we have stormwater sewer repair project that we needed to do, things like that would also...
And this is on the NEORSD website, you know?
I'm assuming they have the program out there, but I could get you other information if you'd like.
That'd be great.
Certainly.
We could look at it for next year and see exactly what we have available.
With the input, of course.
Sure. What did we do last year?
You remember, we did not have this money available last year. This is the first year it's actually available.
Also, it'll be a yearly thing.
It will be a yearly thing from now on. The stormwater program started about two years ago. It had a delay due to a lawsuit. They settled the lawsuit, the program resumed. This money is actually from the time when they first started.
Beautiful. Thank you. Vice Mayor. Same with else in question for... W, you have a question? Mr. Chuni?
Just want to add to that quickly, your question. The Sewer District is collecting this money in their division for stormwater projects and again, 25% back. This is money that's collected in University Heights and it's about $75,000 a year and it returns to us, making the other three quarters net money. We can store it in their accounts for up to five years and create a bigger project if we have one going forward. We can also borrow against future $75,000 that they're going to give to us if we borrow. It has three or four years. If you have a project now, it must be done. Say you got six, seven hundred thousand dollar project and want to borrow seven years and pay them, they allow you to do that. One thing is though, if you don't use the money over the five years, then keep it. So it's not like you have to spend it every year. You can have that five-year period in there where you can keep it there and let it build up to you and that a project. It does have to be stormwater related. You can't do a street sweeper, you can't even just plant tree laundry. If you're doing ice well, if you're doing something like that, filters and stormwater, yes, that's qualified. Certainly, a street sweeper does. Catch basin repairs, there's a lot of projects that do qualify. And that's on their website as well. There's lists that is qualified, don't qualify. We can find it there, we can provide it as well.
Thank you.
I would just add to that, that the economic terms of Mr. Chuni is talking about our contractual. We have anything to do a contract with NEORSD and we have a contract that lays all that out.
Very good. Are there any further questions for Mr. Corney? You need a motion?
Yes. Do we? Yes. Okay. I move that we authorize the purchase of the one global M3 mechanical broom street sweeper through the ODOT cooperative program reimbursed from NEORSD in the amount of $185,936.
Seconded by Councilman Sims. Is there any further discussion? Same then, Ms. Thompson, will you take the roll?
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mrs. Pradee?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Very good work in arranging this for him. Okay, next on the agenda, we have several items that we wanted to consider on emergency. We are still waiting for Mr. Erdl to arrive. It seems to me that we could, however, entertain a motion to, in the meantime, go into executive session to discuss a real estate matter that we have that I mentioned during the Mayor's report. I don't know if this would also be an appropriate time to go into executive session to discuss the prosecutorial and reappointment of the Law Director. Is that okay to do all that once or should we do these separately?
Either way, it's in this one.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to go into executive session for the... These three acts?
Yes, I would like to move that we go into executive session to discuss personnel and real estate matters.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, before we take the vote, just to be clear, we are filming this council meeting today. I intend... I meant to make an announcement of that earlier, that this is part of the overall commitment to transparency, to have filming of these meetings. We started the last time, we're doing this one here and we will be doing more of these in the future. We will be normalizing and coming up with a contract that actually normalizes that arrangement while we try out some videographers. But that said, going into executive session means that we have to clear the gallery of the audience as well as shut off the video recording at this time because this executive session should not be video recorded. If you are so interested, if you're here because you want to hear one of the other items that are going to be considered on emergency, we would invite you to please feel free to have a seat in the lobby or in the conference room in the basement. There's a bunch of seating down there as well and we will send somebody down to let you know when executive session is over so that you can come back up here and rejoin the rest of all the portion of the year. So with that said, there's no further discussion. Kelly, you take the roll.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mrs. Pradee?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Returning to the agenda and resuming from the top, those items that we have already covered. The next item is behind the be, ordinance 2018-01, reappointing Luke F. McConville as Law Director effective February 1, 2018. This would be heard on emergency. We do have an ordinance prepared for that appointment. Mr. McConville has not sworn in at the first meeting of the year for two reasons. One, he could not be there, but two, his term is not actually up until the end of this month. The staggers by design by a previous council with respect to why that is so. So I understand it's the council's will to keep Mr. McConville as our Law Director in this one, and I wholly support it. Is there anybody who wants to speak as to that ordinance?
I'll make the motion. I have moved approval of ordinance 2018-01, reappointing Luke F. McConville as Law Director effective February 1, 2018 on emergency.
Good, we have a motion by Vice Mayor party, seconded by Councilman Sims. Is there any further discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to... I'm sorry. I'd like to say a few words. I first met Mr. McConville when we were both on the Charter Review Committee together back in 2008. As people may know, this council, or most of it, appointed Mr. McConville as the Law Director when we recently changed Law Director. He was worked with the previous administration and the transition to this administration, which I don't know how... It was very smooth, but I appreciate his efforts. I think he knows what he's talking about. I think we're in good hands with him as a Law Director and I'm more than happy to vote and keep him as a Law Director in the city.
And Mayor?
Yes.
I'd just like to say, Mr. McConville is in the unenviable position that is somewhat unique to our council where he is hired by council and works both with the council and the mayor, which is an interesting line to walk depending on what is before us. Mr. McConville has been exceptional at walking that line. He's been objective, credible, and has kept a very cool head and tries to go against us occasionally, and I think he is an outstanding example of Law Director. I'm very proud to make the motion and happy to support this.
Very good. Is there any further discussion?
I'd just like to say, I think he's a great guy.
I would just like to add that he's great Law Director. I am very fortunate that he's also a city resident.
Yes, yes, he is.
Yes, and we are very fortunate that he is a city resident and we're very fortunate that his commitment to our city is both professional and personal. I think it adds another dimension to the job that we can all appreciate and do appreciate.
Right, and since everyone else has started weighing in, I would just like to add that I think he's very diligent, hardworking.
Yes.
But more importantly, I think that he puts in a lot of time related to the city business, more time than we probably expected when he was initially hired. And he stepped up and he's never, you know, really had anything to say except what was needed to get the matters handled. So that is much appreciated and, you know, I... Mayor, I think his work will be our consideration.
Yes.
Yes.
As far as compensation.
Yes, and I think it should be noted that there is an increase in compensation and that it is an effort to approach bringing Mr. McConville online with other Law Directors who deliver the level of service that Mr. McConville delivers. In certain communities, the Law Director makes as much as the Fire Chief, as much as the Police Chief, as much as the Finance Director. Those are full-time Law Directors, granted, but at the same time, I call on Mr. McConville almost every day, whether it's by phone or by email, and I'm not made to feel that we are second to anybody. So he makes us feel as if he's... That we are his full-time client and I feel that every day and I appreciate that greatly. So I don't know if there's anything further anybody would care to say. If there's nothing, then you'll take the roll, Ms. Thompson.
On suspension.
Oh, first, yes, first on suspension of rules.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Pradee?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
And then the motion, so.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Pradee?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
And then the motion, so.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Pradee?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Excellent. Good effect. Thank you very much. Thank you for your role in overseeing the law for me. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is item C. Ordinance... Excuse me.
The old wall was?
Oh, yes. Yes. All right. Okay. Where shall we do that? Right here?
Right here.
Go on. All right, your hand right here after me. Aye?
Aye. Luna McConville.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution?
To support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States of America?
And laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws?
The Constitution and laws.
Of the State of Ohio?
The State of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances?
And the Charter and ordinances.
Of the City of University Heights?
Of the City of University Heights.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
As Law Director?
As Law Director.
Of the City of University Heights?
Of the City of University Heights.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Granted. Next, ordinance 2018-02 acknowledging the appointment of Michael Astra as prosecutor and assistant Law Director and authorizing a contract for compensation on emergency. Do you have a motion?
Some moved.
Motion by Councilman Weisman, seconded by Councilwoman Cameron. Is there any discussion on this motion?
I think we're very fortunate to have Mr. Astra join us with the city and thank you. Very pleased.
Councilwoman Cameron?
Yes, I just want to make sure that my colleagues are aware that my history with Mr. Astra goes back to about 10 years or longer that I've had knowledge of his work. We first met in terms of my career development as a social worker when I worked with children in family services and Mr. Astra was prior to being a judge, served the city and the county as a guardian at light for children who were in need of legal services. So I have personal knowledge of this work and his commitment to children and families that are served as he serves and I think we feel a great path to our city.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cameron. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say?
The only thing I would love is that as a part of our executive session, which was just held, that we all had an opportunity to ask very extensive questions and so even though we don't have questions, at this time, we had the opportunity to go into executive session.
So then, before we vote, I would just like to say a few words. I echo what Councilwoman Cameron said. I too have known Mr. Astra, Judge Astra, for quite a few years now. I would have first encountered him in 1999 when he was a criminal defense lawyer and I have watched him, I think we've watched each other both advancing our careers. I've watched him run for and obtain a seat at the Court of Common Pleas where he served nobly and amply and sought the, you know, pursuit of justice as well as anyone I've ever seen on the bench. I mentioned earlier when I said that, you know, the loss of him on the bench is a game for our city and I'm proud that he will be representing us and our residents in the court in Shaker Heights. So, so thank you. And thank you for considering us as we are considering you. If there's something further, Kelly, you can take the roll.
Mr. Weisman?
On suspension. Oh, excuse me, first on suspension.
Did I say on emergency?
Yes, you did. Okay, so on suspension of rules.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Pradee?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
I mentioned earlier when I said that the loss of him on the bench is a gain for our city. And I'm proud that he will be representing us and our residents in the court in Shaker Heights. So.
So, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for considering us as we are considering you. If there's something further, can I take the role?
Mr. Weisman?
On suspension. Oh, excuse me, first on suspension.
Did I say on emergency?
Yes, you did. Okay. So, suspension of the rules.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Farley?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
And on the main motion?
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Farley?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Motion carries. Michael J. Asher?
Do you have one, please? Yes. Aye?
Aye. Michael K. Astra?
Do solemnly swear?
Solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution?
To support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States of America?
And laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws?
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Ohio?
Of the state of Ohio.
And the charter and ordinances?
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of University Heights?
The city of University Heights.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
As prosecutor?
As prosecutor.
And assistant law director?
And assistant law director.
Of the city of University Heights?
Of the city of University Heights.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
All right. So the next item on the agenda is IMH, ordinance 2018-04, restoring the fire chief to the civil service rank of captain on emergency. I explained this briefly, or maybe not so briefly, during the mayor's report earlier in the meeting. But if Chief Burko, you have two words to say?
I'd like to thank you for the consideration of this, kind of a current situation, entering this under your position, and having an opportunity to go back to the way I was when I was such a researcher that happened to happen.
Thank you, Chief. And I would just reiterate that we appreciate your stepping up to serve our city in the interim capacity as fire chief, and do not in any way wish to jeopardize your ability to return the role of captain if you are not ultimately made the permanent fire chief of University Heights. I am hopeful for you, of course, but obviously, in exchange for your taking the step, we do not want to invite putting you in a precarious position, and that is the purpose of this ordinance. So appreciate the input.
Sond, happy to move ordinance, approval of ordinance 2018-04, restoring the fire chief to the civil service rank of captain on emergency. If some need.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Because seeing none, we will vote first on the suspension.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Farley?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
And then on the main motion?
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Farley?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Next, we have ordinance 2018-06, adopting a moratorium on the enforcement of the pro- oh, sorry, excuse me. Oh, excuse me. Yes, I don't know. Resolution 2018-05, accepting $43,964 from the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, NOPEC, as part of their NOPEC Energize Community NEC program, considered on emergency. Mr. Erdel, if you could address the city on this matter.
Good evening, Council. This is actually one of my favorite grants to present simply because we didn't have to apply for. So as shown in your council packet, there's a letter dated December 15th to Mayor Infeld awarding us the forty, almost forty-four thousand dollars. In talking with the woman who referenced the letter, Ms. Norma Fox Horowitz, she was saying that this is part of the introduction to a new grant program, the NEC grant program. And so this is their way to get out of a word and make communities excited about this. She indicated in the future it will be a competitive program, but in this first round, they awarded a grant funding based on the gas and electric bills, a three-month average. So that's how this odd number kind of comes out in the wash. They initially indicated that they had sent an email now, two weeks ago, and then last week were giving us better ideas of what type of projects they're looking for with this grant. They have not done that as yet. But in the meantime, we want to accept the funding because at least it does indicate implementing the energy efficiency or energy infrastructure projects. So certainly, these are things that we need to be able to provide some energy infrastructure and efficiency for our residents. So in the meantime, while we're accepting the grant funding, it's certainly not to say that we're ready to report on the project because you don't know what we can go forward with. So as soon as we have more information, we should ask that she has.
Great.
Yeah. Congratulations.
Yes. Sorry.
That's kind of a good question.
And in part, you did answer it. We received a grant similar to this in the past, and we did certain improvements to the city. And I know you just stated that you don't know exactly what types of projects will be eligible. But are you, I mean, how will you begin to sort of determine priorities and the utilization of the grant funding?
First, I'd like to see what their program is designed around. So I certainly don't even have really any form of idea because I have no idea of what they're looking for. Are they looking for building? Are they looking for signage? You know, if they need to give us a little bit better idea of what we're allowed to suddenly.
Can we develop some ideas and present them and see them fairly acceptable?
Absolutely. And again, they're developing this program kind of on the fly. They're still trying to clean up some of the program elements and whatnot. So as soon as we have more information, we should give this counsel, and this will be a public process to try to figure out what projects could be eligible and what we want to be using this funding. So like I say, not even knowing kind of what the structure of the grant program looks like, I don't really have an idea of where to go with it. This funding, can I check?
Thanks. Very good.
All right, is there a motion to accept on emergency this grant?
Some. On emergency.
On emergency, yes. Okay, so motion by Vice Mayor Burdick, seconded by Councilwoman Cameron. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we take the role on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Farley?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
And then on the main motion?
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Farley?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, now we have IMH, ordinance 2018-06, adopting a moratorium on the enforcement of the prohibition against three unrelated persons living together as set forth in Conflag Ordinance Section will be one of, be drawn for a period expiring on May 31st, 2018, to allow the city to review policy issues in connection with the ordinance on emergency. I would simply state, as I stated earlier, that I believe it would be inadmissible to enforce this ordinance if it are possibly regulated for change, although at the same time, not looking to really repeal it, but to seek in a more artful way the ends that the city and its residents truly seek to achieve with respect to rental properties, and in particular, the rental properties that are rented by students. Mr. Burdick, do you want to speak to us to the concept of the ordinance?
Yes, there are some qualifications in the ordinance to make sure that the city can continue to enforce the ordinance should council elect either not to make changes or to make changes that wouldn't impact the illegality of this type of arrangement. So specifically, what we are saying in the ordinance is that upon the expiration of the moratorium, the city reserves the right to cite anyone who's in violation of the ordinance irrespective of when they may have entered into such an arrangement, such a living arrangement or mental agreement. We also are clarifying that the building department is, remains precluded from issuing a permit for any sort of rental arrangement or tenancy that would violate the ordinance. And the remaining provisions of 1280 that would relate to rental inspections and other rental regulations will remain in full force and effect.
Thank you, Mr. McConville. Is there any discussion?
Do we have a copy of that?
You don't have a copy of the ordinance?
Do we have a copy? It's not in the brown box.
It is.
It is? Oh, it's okay. Let me, because I didn't see it.
So I have other questions.
Very good.
The vice chairman will do it. So. In terms of conditions that the law director stated, the, I'm fuzzy on exactly what the conditions are again. Somebody who's been cited for this until now can look forward to continued enforcement as if the moratorium did not exist?
What we're clarifying is that the moratorium isn't permission to either enter into or engage in conduct that violates the ordinance. So the conduct that violates the ordinance would be to have more than three unrelated persons living together in one dwelling. We're clarifying that upon expiration of the moratorium, the building department becomes aware of such an arrangement. Even if it began during the period of moratorium, we will still deserve the right to enforce our ordinance. We're also saying that if someone comes to the building department during the period of the moratorium with an application, a rental registration that identifies more than three unrelated persons to be living together in one dwelling, that applicant would not get a permit. In other words, they would remain subject to the ordinance as it's in effect. We're simply not going to cite, issue citations for illegal arrangements that we become aware of during the period of the moratorium. That's all we're saying.
And someone who was cited last week for this, a fictitious person who might have been cited last week providing this section, what happens to that?
Any existing citation will be unaffected by the moratorium. I don't think there are any. But we also do clarify in here that, you know, for example, there was a DCA matter that was recently affirmed by council. That affirmation remains in place, so that individual is not excused from the ordinance. They're subject to it. We're simply saying there aren't going to be prosecutions during the period of the moratorium.
New citations?
New citations and/or prosecution. Well, if there's a prosecution, if there's a citation that's already issued, there would be a prosecution, but I'm not aware of any. Yeah, so we sort of got a clean break right now.
Yeah, is this something that's going to be studied in the committee or formally by the administration?
Well, I would encourage public comment. I would encourage the committee, if you was chair, would be so inclined to take a hearing or be writing a summons. Otherwise, I'd be happy to create an ad hoc committee or assistance committee, one that reports to the mayor to do that.
I'm just interested that we have a strategy to jump on this quickly because it's May 31st, we'll be here soon. And my guess is that landlords who write to college students are going to be negotiating leases during the month of May and June, so.
Well, that's possibly so.
Possibly. I mean, I'm willing to entertain the moratorium. I just want to make sure that we have, we have time to accomplish what it is we want to accomplish before it runs out.
Mr. Mayor, is that out of order? Oh, please go ahead. You are.
Yeah, I forget our rules. Yes. My concern.
Is he on the clock now?
My concern with this, I don't concern with the way it is. I think though that landlords need to be notified about this in a very clear writer because I don't mind when, for some reason, I'll be changing and the enforcement starts again, I don't want landlords coming into court raising the defense of, well, we didn't think it was going to be prosecuted because nobody told us that. I think I would use, you know, the word moratorium. A lot of you don't understand what that means. So I think just a very basic letter using plenty of emotions to go out to landlords and saying, hey, this is what's going on. You're still in violation, however, we're just not enforcing it. You cannot come into court and say, hey, we were told that this wasn't, this wasn't against the law. Because that's the defense I know they're going to raise if, for some reason, the law doesn't change.
Right, and we want to be very clear that this is not a license that anyone entered into a rental arrangement that would be in violation of the ordinance as presently stands.
That's my concern. It's sort of trying to use that as a, take the trial.
And you try, but. I think it's a great idea. We do have a current list of all the landlords, right, because they have qualifications.
Sure. And it should be a comprehensive, it is legal. Yes, so we should put together a search letter. Is, is that a letter you should come from the law director?
I can drive that letter and run it by you so we collaborate on it.
We both sign it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm good. And we should probably collaborate also with our building commissioner. And I believe you're the keeper of the local list of landlords based on the number of permits that have been pulled. So I believe it was legally rented, or that you have current application on file. I don't think we can.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, there's, the explanation may be more than why we're fit on most of them.
Okay.
With an email list, a letter list?
I don't know.
I think a letter is a fantastic idea though because it spells it out specifically. Tells everybody what's going on.
This lends itself to a letter.
Yeah, and that's, we did a motion stand on there for my orders purposes. You know, you prosecute, you already can do it.
And then this is Cameron.
Yes. Has something occurred since our last visitation to this issue at your chair yet? I mean, why would this come forward in this affair? Is there some issue that developed as a result of the decision by council to uphold the DCA decision?
Well, there is no new citation, if that's what you are asking. But there is a, it has come to my attention that there may be some legal issues with the ordinance as it's presently constituted. There may be an issue with respect to whether it is fair when it comes to, even though we tend to think of our properties as being fairly uniform in the city, they aren't necessarily. Some houses have more bedrooms than others, some have more parking than others, some have fewer space in bedrooms than others. But we have one bright light rule that applies to everything. Further, there may be some discriminatory outcomes, things that aren't intended but could nevertheless result as a result of the existing ordinance. And I don't necessarily want to get off of the weeds and live wild hypotheticals, or give anybody any bright ideas of ways they can raise a case against the city. But it is something that has been brought to my attention, and I felt that it did merit some immediate attention to review and possibly revitalize.
If I mean, this seems to be sort of what comes along with the new administration and a new set of eyes looking at. I'm not hearing the mayor say that anybody has any this or that type of clause of action. I think these are just the kinds of things. Our current mayor is a lawyer, a good one, and I think he probably is prone to look at things and to have a. look at things and to have a, probably a keen perspective on the last administration. It seems pretty normal to me.
Yeah, and there are lots of things that I could possibly have focused on, you know, besides this, some addition to this, but, but given, given the time of year it is and given when many of these properties will be up for new leases, it seemed that if we didn't do this now, that maybe we'd be picking a handout for another year's potential before we address it. And I don't want to diminish that, that there is a wholesale review that we ought to be doing with respect to housing and zoning and planning. And while in some ways this may be getting ahead of some of that, I do think that because of some of the other considerations in there, it's some special attention.
Okay. Mayor, I just want to point out that we have our most senior DCA members sent an email that we all have copy of.
Yes.
Of ordinance.
Please go, please go very quickly.
Well, she just urges us not to approve this and to put it, send it to committee. I agree with sending it to committee. I just hope we can ask, because I think there can be a lot of discussion around this. And I agree with Councilman Wiseman that the landlords are going to be, maybe signing students up sooner than we think.
Yes, which is, even with the moratorium until the end of May, if we can get this done before the end of May, that would be ideal. And I do respect the opinion of our senior member of the DCA who is against the issues of the moratorium, but does seemingly agree with the idea of, if we're going to consider this, to consider this committee, and that is my contention. The difference of opinion here would be whether to have a moratorium on the road in the meantime or simply to send it to committee and resume and continue to issue citations as we find violations. My feeling was that it was inequitable to issue citations on something that we hear will be changing in the near future. Is there any further discussion?
Motion.
Oh, yes, I suppose we, I don't know that we've had a motion. Is there, is there a motion?
I would move that we adopt ordinance 2018-06, which is a moratorium on the enforcement of the prohibition against three unrelated persons living together as set forth in, provides in our code of ordinances 1280.10b1, expiring on May 31st, 2018, in emergency.
Is there a second? So a motion by Councilman Wiseman, second by Councilman Sims, is there any discussion? If we will then, Mr. Thomas, you take it along the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mrs. Farley?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Keanu?
Aye.
And on the main motion.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mrs. Farley?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Keanu?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn, thank you. Okay, the next item would be the motion to hold in executive session. That has already happened, I don't believe there's any reason to return to executive session. No, we've covered everything. Okay, so that takes us to directors' reports. Finance.
Thank you, Mayor. Today we rolled out open enrollment for the city's benefits plans, giving employees the option to change their current election, to add dependents, or to do, to do nothing. It's a passive enrollment, so if I don't hear from them, they stay in their existing plans. This enrollment period is being rolled out with, with no additional cost to the employee. The costs stay the same. The plans have not changed since last year, the plan is the same. There's a high deductible plan, there's a gain screen $500 deductible plan, and there's a zero deductible plan for CLEED Care, which is the mental health network. So we kind of give them a broad range of choices that they can make. The open enrollment will go from today through the 28th of January, and we'll lock everybody in before the 1st of February, and we'll be ready to go for the new year.
Thank you, Mr. Chaney. Director Paul?
Yes, Mayor, I just want to give council a brief update on the Epic Lifestyle LLC versus Jeffries case. You may recall, this is the case that relates to 3886 sales fee where Lane Fass to be reported or appointed as a receiver for purposes of rehabbing the home, placing a receiver's lane on the home, and then obtaining the right to sell the home. We had a conference call with the court and all of the parties on January 8th. During that meeting, Lane's counsel issued an updated report on the ongoing extent of the rehab of the property and indicated that they believe the property will be fully code compliant and will be applying for their certificate of occupancy at the end of this month. So that process has worked very well for the city, and we will have another conference call with the court on February, I believe it's 21st. So at that time, hopefully I will be letting them know that the property's up to code and ready to be marketed.
Very good. Thank you. Oh, do you have any questions?
Yeah, thank you. So just so I'm clear, this property was in foreclosure, vacant, whoever started the foreclosure was gone, the neighbor then used illegal mechanism to fix the property, he's going to be able to sell it, then it'll be an actual house when this gets done instead of a mere and possibly needing to be torn down.
That's correct.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harrow, for meaning this to the committee.
Statutory remedy that we've not seen before in the city, but this particular LLC has done, they've been true to their word, I guess is the way to put it, in terms of the timing of all of the repairs.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Harrow. Almita.
Mayor, council, I'm pleased to report that the police department was recipient of the voiding traffic safety rule. This year we got silver, and it subtly reads, "Community Traffic Safety Silver, long presented to the University of NICE Police Department for Leadership and Educational Programs to Protect Citizens and Through Traffic Safety." One of the main areas that led to us receiving their report is between 2014 and this year, last year, I'm sorry, we're able to reduce traffic accidents by about 40%. In 2014, we had 345 traffic accidents. Last year, we had 203, I'm sorry, 2016, we had 203, 2017, we don't have all the papers in, but we're around 200. So it wasn't by accident, we did install some traffic control devices. We have actually been able to enforce and identify some high-risk traffic areas where the accidents, sanctuary, rain, Cedar, and places like that, more to Sun Road. So we're pretty happy about it, and aside from a plaque hanging on the wall, it is important that we continue to take proactive steps to enhance traffic safety, because we got more bikes out on the road, and eventually I believe that we're going to be installing bike lanes on the road, which is also an area where we've had significant number of accidents. So we plan on continuing to identify areas, continuing to track high-risk areas, and continuing to reduce accidents and enhance road safety.
And Almita, safety part two.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to report the fire department. This year so far, we've had a total of 80 incidents, 37 of those being for emergency medical help. We've responded to our mutual and automatic aid partners 21 times, and there's been a total of five working structural fires this year so far that we've alternated with. We've also started in the month of January, our new electronic patient care reporting system. First time that we've done anything like this that's faceless. So far, it's working very well. It's a new web-based program that stores all the patient records in the cloud, it's secure, it syncs with all of our computer-driven dispatches, all the perky keeping for the times and incident numbers, auto-populated the program. Patient info, incident info is also shared with the hospital, live times, we're putting it into a whole device, and it is also being used for fall control as well. So it's working out pretty well for us so far. And we also wanted to reiterate the month of January and extreme cold that we've had to be aware of carbon monoxide dangers. It's a colorless, odorless gas, getting the furnace and your appliances checked regularly is important, and if you ever feel nauseous, signs of a headache, or if you have a carbon monoxide detector going off, it's not, doesn't say, you can call 911, so a fire department can come. We have years in our fire trucks that can check the levels, and then the rescue squad can also check levels of carbon monoxide in the blood that should have been.
Very good, thank you, Chief. Thank you. Almita Service.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I just wanted to report a little bit about water main breaks. There currently are three water main breaks in the city, and two valve leaks, which look very similar, but they're, they're different in nature, and they're going to be different in priority to prepare for the clean water environment. All of these leaks have been cleaning water, and they will address them in some priority order as they seek them. Right now, nothing is currently damaging in Broadway, other than bubbling up through the cracks, so hopefully they will be here in a week or two to address each of those. Earlier this evening, we had the tree pruning and removal project meeting, and that contractor will be beginning next week, providing we get the contract executed, it will be for some tender in the remainder of this week.
Very good, do you have a question, Almita? You know, anytime trees come up, I have a question. So my question is, did you just say that we're going to start pruning trees next week?
That is correct. They will, their contract will have a timeframe between now and April 1st.
Okay, so I didn't know we could do, I didn't know that type of work could be done in this type of weather.
It's, it's not comfortable for everybody to be out doing it, but they can do it.
Okay, it won't damage the trees?
No, as a matter of fact, the, rather we work out better for the trees that's cold and they're unvolvated.
Okay, and then, this is not a question, this is really a statement or request. Is it possible to redo the seminar that you gave tonight, maybe in March?
I would think it would be possible, sure. The contractor will still be under contract.
And the only reason that I would suggest that is because as a resident, I probably would presume that trees are not going to be pruned in the winter, and my interest would probably be higher in the warmer weather than learning about this than it would be in a sub-zero weather.
Very possible.
Yeah, so I think you might get a better ordinance, and it would serve to educate the community better if we repeated this at a different time in the spring.
I'm going to hitch a hop of Councilman Sims' comment. I happen to be aware of at least two residents who had hoped to be in the program, but for whatever reason, said otherwise, could not be here, but did express interest in the program, you know, the tree pruning program generally, and would be interested in asking questions. And if we were to schedule another meeting closer to the spring, perhaps that would be a time when they could make it up. So I think there would be interest, I think there is greater interest than perhaps what tonight's showing was, and perhaps it is the reason you suggested.
I agree, it's hard to think about trees right now, pruning in the middle of Monday mornings, so.
Well.
Well, no, this is going back to the water main breaks. Can you just tell us where the water main breaks and valve leaks are?
Sure. 2229 in Sabre, which is across from our detective bureau house, in the middle of Sabre is one. Traymore on the east side of Warrensville, approximately 20 or 30 feet down Traymore, that's the Milton Road, approximately 2440, actually probably 44. That's the west side of Milton, just south of University Parkway. Those are the three broken mains. There's a valve leak at Laurelhurst and Washington, and there's a valve leak at Summerfield and South Creek Road. Those are five.
Thank you. Councilwoman, Karen.
Yes, Mr. Farley, is there any evidence, I guess, of water main leaks causing additional problems for private citizens?
There was an incident down on Metal Brook where a water main leak caused the gas line to fill with water, which cut off gas service to the residents in that area for a couple of days. Gas company responded with any crews, dug holes, opened their gas line, drained it out, the water department fixed the leak, and everybody received service again for both water and gas.
Okay. Did you have any difficulties with water main problems on Cedar in the past one?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Are you referring to Cedar in Washington?
More like Cedar, they're, they're.
Oh, yeah, I'm not aware of anything down there. There was an issue in South Yule about Cedar, like as the mayor had discussed, near Washington, a little bit east of Washington. There was a hydrant line off of the main which cracked.
Okay.
And they had to replace that one.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Going back a little bit to the issue about trees and responsiveness, part of the reason we may not have a large dependence on some of these is that we're available, answer questions about trees and pruning at any time, so I would encourage anybody with a question that may not want to wait to the next public discussion, so feel free to give me a call, we can address it.
Excellent. And, you know, with your permission, I'll be happy to pass along your phone number to those two residents, and anybody else who might call in, I appreciate that, Mr. Farley. Also, I do appreciate your having scheduled with the arborist tonight's session, the residents who are here.
Hello.
Any other questions? Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Harrow. Okay, next, Building Commissioner, Mr. Allen.
Mr. Mayor, members of council? It's your aware, the flights are at the grand opening on January 8th. They're operating currently under temporary subjective occupancy. This is pending the completion of all their landscaping items. Now, most of the landscaping isn't, except for some low-level planes, what they call cranes. We expect that to be completed in the, you know, early spring. In addition, we have two businesses that are under construction right now in the same area, one on Cedar Road called Fish Biscuits, they already have a temporary, and then one on Taylor Road, not too far from there, which will be a sushi bar. There's two businesses right in that same area.
On Tampa Road or on Green Road?
I'm sorry, Green Road, sorry, Green Road, I'm going to say it wrong, I have, I have a spell, I'm sorry. In addition, we have a welfare community in our borders, it's a twenty-five acre site, which has had some major renovation issues coming up. Immediately, their plan is to demolish one of their large buildings, they have what they call building G, which has individuals that need passing supervision. Under today's standards, this older building does not perform. So in the meantime, what they're going to do is demolish it and move some of those services that are currently in that building into another building, building D, which they will build a ramp on so they can encourage deliveries more easily. And they're going to accomplish an annex on their garage. So basically relocating some of the services currently in building G, demolishing that building, and then present a new building that they're coming into. That's one of the biggest projects we have coming up this year. In addition, I might mention that the exterior maintenance program will be continuing. We have a five-year program under which we intend to visit every section of the city once every five years. Coming up either in March or April, depending on the weather, we will inspect that area south of Cedar and west of South Hill.
South of?
South of Cedar and west of South Hill. So those streets that cut over Cedar, north of Cedar, a lot of these.
You're on the wrong side.
That's all I have.
Other questions? Any questions, Mr. Reynolds? Just Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Reynolds, a couple of weeks ago, Patrick introduced us to a new computerized system for the building department that's, I believe we approved that, right? And that's going to be implemented? Are you working with him now? Is there?
Yes.
Yeah, I think you were here at the meeting when we adopted that.
Yes, but since I attended the meeting where we had members of other communities that are also adopting the same computer program, Shaker Heights, Parma, South Yule. And we're going to be an active member of this group. We're at the formative stage now where we get to input some of our desires, I guess you could say. What we would wish this program to do for us to satisfy the needs that we have here at University Heights. So we're looking forward to playing a role in the development of this software for us even in the next.
Does it go live soon? I have some impressions that it will be live relatively quickly.
I think it will be implemented in stages quite shortly. I don't know when that date is, but it will be, I would think within the next sixty to ninety days. I don't have a date on that yet. One of the things that we're working on that was discussed at our last meeting was what kind of formatting we use that would be kind of universally accepted among all the communities. And part of that is creating dropdown menu items that would satisfy the building department needs. It looks like we're going to implement the building side first before the housing side. And so we're looking at what kind of permits are, what are our most common permit types for building, for electrical or what have you? And then those will be actually in the computer, this will allow us to communicate with county, county much quicker and much better. County's position is that way, our property values have been kind of decimated here. And this will help us.
This will help what?
Decimated, that they've been lowered.
This will help.
The sorrows, yes. I could report, we have a project going on that increases the value of a home, you would call it that. So county, about six months after that, they choose to follow up and then kind of check on it to see what's been completed. And if it has been, it's the type of project that increases a home's value and then increases the value of it.
Yeah, so they can increase the taxes, right?
I have a different question. Because I was a little surprised when you said that the landscaping for Swinson's is basically done, but for some low-level plantings. And I know that in the questions that I have heard and in the conversations that I've been privileged to, I think nearby residents had been left with the impression that in the weather world, something different would be happening, which would help address some of their concerns, but that's not the case.
Yeah, as Mayor, this question came up about two or three weeks ago, I just investigated, this is before Swinson opened. I went through all of our notes, I went through the planning permission notes, the notes before council. Every additional plan that we had, and then I conferred with Swinson's on there. And two, looking for an amended landscaping plan, but no, there wasn't. So we're going by these original plan that was approved as hardly approved for ours. Now, that being said, one of the reasons I mentioned this was in terms of the mayor, there is going to be a meeting from the Jeff Flowers, from Swinson's, the CEO, he's got the power to make these decisions. He can choose them.
I hope in that meeting, the landscaping is a part of the discussion because, I mean, I've been by there a million times and I know that it is wildly successful. But it was my personal impression that there would be more landscaping in terms of trees. And I was a little disappointed that the trees that were installed are of such a young age. I thought it would be more mature trees. And so to reach a level where I believe some of us gave the impression that the landscaping would be, it will be years before that ever occurs.
I have to agree. I mentioned something very similar to that concern. I was hopeful these trees would grow. It confirms what we approved, but these trees will grow. And in the meantime, of course, that doesn't solve the situation of the visibility of the trees. Sorry. So that's the situation as much as I can tell you right now.
Thank you.
Okay, community development, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, I've got a few things to bring up that we might report out. The first is we do have a new championship. We've now moved into the twenty-first century and it's under City of University Heights. So the first council meeting of this year has been posted and obviously more to follow. So exciting news there. The second thing is that Mayor Brennan and I last week, last Wednesday, met down at the sewer district with regards to the community awareness for recycling grants. Leading up to that, we had reached out to Councilman Sims, Captain Councilwoman Cameron, based on some of the projects that are allowed under the grant. And as Councilman Sims pointed out in his email, it's very particular what they will allow. So they'll allow obviously an awareness component, so that could include a mailer or a postcar, magnet or something of that nature that raises awareness of how recycle, what to recycle. So for example, something we learned over there when they were at the Super Bowl parties, those red solar cups are now recyclable.
Really?
Yes, yes. So that is part of their.
The red and blue cups.
I'm sorry.
The big red and blue cups.
Correct. I didn't know they were tenacious. So they're not recyclable. So raising awareness of things like that, what aren't recyclable, recyclable items. The second are recycling containers. So that's what we use to get recycling containers in some of our business districts previously. And then the third component is a recycling event. So we have the household hazardous waste recycling and shredding. So those are the three areas where I'd have a great project. And based on some of the feedback, it sounds like we'll be doing primarily an awareness campaign that leads the city and also thinking back off of an email and online correspondence and whatnot, really try to hone in this message of what is and isn't allowed.
I just want to say, I think a magnet that tells exactly what's recyclable and what's not would be outstanding because we actually printed something out and taped it up where our trash is. We're always asking, is this recyclable? Can we do this? Can we do that? Those newspaper bags, are those recycle, recyclable? Are the plastic bags?
No.
No, no, you can take them to grocery stores.
You said no?
Yes.
That's what I understand, but we're always second guessing that. So having something really clear, and refrigerators are easier.
Right, right. And the thing is, the solid waste district is pointing out, pointing people to is cat health recycles.org, that's their website. And right up on the top, there's a green bar and it's a search engine where you can plug anything that you don't know. Can I recycle this or not? Because every day they're adding items to the list, they're finding new things that you can and cannot recycle. The clam shells or the, you know, the fruit things, you can't recycle. For berries and all those things, you can't recycle. So all those little things that I didn't know and everyone else probably has questions about, were a lot of times we figured it better to be saved than sorry, just throwing recycling camp as a plastic. Well, if there's too much of it, they'll just land it out. And then anything good in that bag really is gone.
It's all bush and dirt.
Right, right, yes, yes. So those are the same things we're working on.
Yeah, I think one of the things that I found instructive and why a magnet would be a fine idea is there are some things intuitively feel like things that should be recyclable and perhaps in other places could be recycled, but presently in County County are not part of the recycling program. So even though something may have a recycle logo on it, if it's the wrong kind of plastic, you don't want to put it in the recycle bin or in your recycle bash. So.
Yes, yes. So definitely something targeting that awareness is what we're looking at. The third item is that Mayor Brennan has allowed us to afford the renewal of the Heritage Home Program. This program we had discussed at the last council meeting, focus our technical systems and local interest, fix loans for homeowners for tenants older than fifteen years here in the city. We saw tremendous uptick in programs usage over the last year. And we're really working with the Heritage Home Program and the Global Restoration Society to continue that trend. Because everything we heard from our residents has been positive about their experience and the ease of use of the program. So just kind of having that one-stop shop of everything from what do I do to help you get the contractors business, to even having finance and tool, this would have been helpful for our residents.
Very.
And then I have one final thing I'm going to hand out first and then we'll go, we'll walk through. All right, so, excuse me, starting this year, I'd really like to focus in on some of our housing and building and our property transfers here in the city. And it's data that we've received in the past, our building department uses it, so every month we get what we call a HAP report. And that is a listing of properties that transferred in the previous month. And that generally comes ten days to two weeks into the new month. So for example, between January tenth and January fourteenth, we receive December's property data. Those are transfers that happen between those two, or between those dates. So what I'd like to start doing is providing a summary of what's going on in the community. Because we're using the data, but we're not fully utilizing it. And this could be an effective tool to help the community understand what's going on, but also help in some policy decisions here in this body. So what I painted out is what we published on our website. And the first is kind of looking from top to bottom is the update with Heritage Home Program, trying to raise some awareness there. But also then working down, there were forty-two transfers listed in HAP report for the month of December. And from there, I want to exclusively focus on housing, so residential transfers. And what I call distinct transfers, because I can't verify what's an organic transaction other than based on buyer and seller name and some reasonable assumptions from those points of view. So I wound up with thirty distinct transfers over the past month. And from there, we can talk about what's a more valuable statistic, but in this instance, I cited that the average residential sales price over the month of December is approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And then underneath, there's a graphical representation of what that average values look like over the past several months. And as you see, there is a dip and that dip is very consistent with just real estate trends in the winter homes. Not many people are missing their homes in the winter. But one thing that was of particular usefulness, I believe, is the areas of focus. And then there's some definitions and methodology on that of how I came up with some of these things. The first is the investment target area. Now, this is something that has been defined with the county and with the city in conjunction. These are areas throughout the county and various communities that are identified as someplace where we would want to focus some public dollars to help spur private investment. So these are areas where maybe previously they used to be a low moderate income census tract and now receives improvement, or maybe there's an area of concern where we're saying, oh, we're not seeing all the good things that we want to see here. Let's designate this as something to focus on. And then the other one is the low moderate income census tract. This is something determined by census data. Both of these come from, and the map of each city is, in addition, I hand out, these come from the county department of development to help you understand where in the city they are. But the I T A or the investment target area is at the northwestern corner, up near Cedar Taylor. And then it'd be low moderate income census tract is on the northeastern corner, up near Cedar Green. So just trying to understand how is the average and median income, or I'm sorry, sales price still right there. With respect. So I know it's a lot to throw at you guys, but I just wanted to start introducing this because I think this is a valuable tool that we can start using.
Thank you very much. Did we actually purchase two irregular parcels in December?
Yes, you did. Yes, you did.
Are we doing this all the time and, or this is new? And was that a mandate?
This is your own mandate, yes. So these are two regular parcels and the reason why I describe this as such, they don't have property addresses. So one is tucked away in the backyard between Metal Brook and Edgerton. It's on the north side of Metal Brook, had a nestle back in there, surrounded all by.
I know exactly.
Yes, yes. And the other one is along the backyards of Bushnell, sandwiched between University Square by the back end of parking garage and properties on Bushnell. So these are just perennial properties that are on the state forfeiture list. And the city gets calls all the time, whose responsibility is this? And no one's taking care of it. So we're just trying to clean up some of these oddities throughout the city and make sure we're getting all of the manual productive use, even if it's just a side yard for someone to enjoy and kick a football or kick a soccer thing all the time, so.
Software speaking.
Yes.
Sir, is it our intention to market some of these irregular properties to people in the neighborhood to either annex them to their own properties or to sell them outright or build them? What is the intention?
These are tiny little parcels, maybe a hundred or two hundred square feet, so we're not able to build too much. But it really would be more for the benefit of the neighbors surrounding them. And in some cases, the neighbor may not even know that it's not their property because they're just odd sizes. So just kind of cleaning up some of these outstanding issues is really this first focus to the state mortgageers.
Okay. If I have one, I need to tell you about.
Excellent. Mr. Secretary of State, Councilman Sims, would you have something?
I just wanted to commend Kai Kipron's work. And I'm hopeful that in all of this, this could somehow be tied into a more comprehensive strategy, including community development and probably building and housing. So that we can do something to kickstart appreciation in this community. I know that I've lived here for a long time, over thirty years. And I know what I bought my property for and I know what it's worth today. And it's not, it has, it has not even kept up with inflation. And that does not even include the improvements that I made to the property. So as far as an investment, it hasn't been a very strong investment. It's been a wonderful place to live and I still enjoy the home. But if you're looking at it from a financial and economic standpoint, it hasn't panned out. So we need to have a comprehensive strategy that is focused on boosting the appreciation of this community. of this community. And this information, you know, is very valuable and helpful and hopefully providing some ideas as to where we can start. But that's what I'm, you know, I just think that one of the most important things that we have going for us is the fact that many of the homes in this community are brick homes. And they tend to require less maintenance. And because they require less maintenance, we don't have a real sense of some of the issues that are going on with these properties. But we need to have a focus on whatever we can do to increase curb appeal, to come up with floor plans that are modernized, to have hopefully some standard type of floor plans or additions that we could recommend to people. Because we've talked about this in the past, one of the things that you know about the properties in University Heights is that they don't have the modern open concept floor plans. And so that also contributes to a lack of growth in the value of the properties or interest in folks. But we are strategically located near University Circle and the hospitals and the growth that is going on. That's what we need to find a way to capitalize on the housing stuff in this community.
Absolutely.
Good, your line.
If I may echo what Councilman Sims said, I, as much as anybody here greatly appreciates what you've done here in bringing to us so that we can openly discuss and openly analyze the trends here. Because I think that puts us in a better position to move, to better move the trend that we would like to see it go, which is to advance. And I've seen, and appreciate, and I think we've seen in communities similar to ours, like Lakewood comes to mind, how they have had a substantial increase in their property values just since 2010. And they've done some things differently than we've done. And I think there's something that we can learn from what they've been doing. And part of it, I think, is being candid and addressing these things how, and seeing who they are, and not trying to wish something away by pretending it isn't so. So I think this is a step in the right direction, and I want to thank you very much for bringing this here, Council.
Absolutely, yes. And the funny part is that none of these things work in isolation. So the In-This Building Department code enforcement software is a number set in the right direction. All these things give us different tools for different viewpoints that we can work, analyze, and understand what's going on, and then always just add better, you know, better information.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thanks. Okay, Kyle, turn it over.
Council's committee reports, building committee. Yes, thank you, Mayor. We actually have a building committee scheduled for January 23rd, which is a week from today, yes, I believe, yes. That meeting will be in the library at Fennway and Cedar, Cedar Road, yeah, Pennsyl Street. Yes, Fennway and Cedar, I believe in the basement there are conferences. We will be marked, when we get there, just sort of a change of pace into the library and just the goings on in the city. We're going to discuss a number of things. One is possibly adopting the ordinance allowing people to have chickens in their backyards. There is a legislative fix in store for the vacant property ordinance that we enacted at the first meeting, which I believe a lot of it is going to have for us. We still have to tie up the issue about the apartment situation and the complaint residents on Bushnell Boulevard, there's that road. I learned today that we actually will be looking at the information related to the moratorium for the ordinance, about 300 registered persons in the city. And I also have an issue on point-of-sale inspections that I'd like to bring up with my colleagues to discuss. Have a full agenda for the building committee meeting. Seven o'clock, according to today. Why?
There's a lot of requests.
Well, I meant this way, going past mine, however, I understand the library and the design so you can do the conferences after the library is closed.
Hey, if you sign it that way, that doesn't mean you're going to care about people's statements.
Well, that'll be another item for the agenda we can discuss. How long the meeting's going to be? But just for the crowd here, I'm not going to be eating chickens, we're going to be talking about.
Thank you.
Thank you. Civic information, Councilwoman Cameron.
I wanted to make everyone aware that civic information from the civic committee also includes the IT issues as part of this committee. And Mayor and I are supposed to agree with about the issues that we've experienced with IT and becoming the mayor and beginning to work in that capacity. So we will be beginning to discuss the IT issues. I may have to talk to the mayor, we may have to reformulate the committee as it wants to visit. We certainly will be reviewing the last recommendations of the IT that were offered to the city by the IT committee in 2015, I believe. They had a series of recommendations that we would be visiting to include audio and video here in chambers, in council chambers. And we will be adding to that the issues that Mayor has suggested we need to consider in terms of telephone, computer systems, other, and server units. So we're going to have full plates, I'm going to have to work with systems countless times to determine what would be the best way that we can incorporate IT issues into our next meeting agendas. As well, I want to remind everybody that civic affairs also includes issues related to seniors as well as transportation issues. And also, I want to begin to pick up issues that Councilman Rock brought to our attention in 2015 and 16 with each one of the council. He spent quite a bit of time developing projects and plans for gateway neighborhoods in terms of Cedar Taylor area. And I want to resume and pick up where he left off in terms of those plans. And to that end, I've already contacted Kevin Smith, who is one of the leaders in the Cedar Taylor Business District area. And he's informed me that he has already been in contact with Mr. Groley Myers. And they've already initiated a meeting to begin to resume the work that's already been done. So we're going to pick up where we left off, we're going to try to create something that responds to the efforts and issues that were brought forward by our mayor and by the business owners in that Cedar Taylor Association. That concludes what I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. A lot of lofty things there, and that's all the work, you'll be welcome.
Yes.
Finance committee, Vice Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. We have our first budget meeting, January 22nd, Monday, here in council chambers at 7:00. The mayor and the finance director will have the first draft of the budget for us to review. That will be the finance committee of council and the finance advisory of council. I'm Anna Christine Bryan, to the finance advisor. She has extensive experience. I shared a resume with everyone earlier today. She is currently, has volunteered the investment committee chair for the Alabama Memorial School, for the Board of Trustees, for example. She has been involved in a number of investment organizations over the years and has significant experience, as well as an MBA from the US. For the committee of the whole, a retreat with the mayor. We are looking at an evening starting at 5:30 and going until 9:30. And that's the quirk of council to all council for good minutes. These would be a late meeting. Finally, I just wanted to let everyone know, there's a Democracy in Education series. And there will be one, January 29th, titled Superintendent's Fight Back: What Local Leaders Do When State Policy Works Against the Best Interest of Their Students and Schools. This will be a forum with the superintendent of Woodridge Local Schools, the superintendent of Olmsted Falls City Schools, and our Dr. Dixon, the superintendent of CH28 Schools. This will be held up in the High Cafeteria from 7:00 to 8:00. Just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that.
What date is that?
It is January 29th. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, respect. Governmental affairs, Councilwoman Lice is not with us this evening. Is anybody from that committee able to report?
There is a meeting on Thursday night of next week.
The 25th.
Right.
Okay, 7:00 here?
7:00.
Correct.
Is that the library, or is that here?
Here.
So far, it's here.
So far.
Okay.
We'll see what goes on Tuesday, whether they keep it out.
Okay, okay. Very good. Recreation, Councilman Earl.
Yes, I'm going to be consulting with Councilwoman Cameron. Yes, and pass the torch and do some brainstorming and try and pull some of the things that are out there for a while. Yeah, so, then I'll be there. Bye, Taylor.
What I've done for you.
Really?
Yes, I did a speaker. I consulted with the head of the Recreation Department. And there is, there are no changes of books.
Oh, wow.
Okay. So there's nothing that you need to be concerned about in terms of changing as far as the next printing of our recreation book, which generally happens in March.
All right.
So maybe we can work with the mayor and you all can decide how we want to present the recreation booklet.
All right.
That has to go out before March 30th.
All right.
And, but actually, nothing would need to be changed except for dates of service. Now, I would recommend that you do get in touch with the lady who operates and the concession, concessionist. Understanding she's had some personal changes and that might have, might affect her if we continue in that position.
Those aren't easy positions to fill, are they?
No.
If I may interject, I, while I've not spoken with her recently, I did see her at our last meeting, and we spoke briefly about her intention to continue to serve. So I believe that unless something's changed in the last two weeks, that.
She's good.
She is, but we do need to touch base with her regardless, so. Councilor will be happy to do that with you.
All right.
And that would be my only recommendation. I would be providing the mayor with contact information for. My brain just stopped working.
Ms. Cameron?
Please, pardon.
Do you mean, are you trying to, are you trying to get the name of the person who?
No, I haven't given any, I've just got to make up my program.
All here to.
How does yours work?
All here to.
All here to.
Very much, very wide-ranging suggestions, but that's what I was trying to recall.
Okay.
The All Here to program has operated in part by our former resident, Baron Carter.
Okay.
There it goes.
We'll get to details after this.
Yeah.
Take it apart.
Yeah, we can talk, take a time about this.
Yeah, let me get it. Private, please.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we can all talk about it.
Okay.
But other than that.
We can do it right here.
No. Where we can, after we. Okay, safety committee, Councilman Brock cannot be here this evening due to emergency circumstances. Is there anybody from that committee who would care to make a report? Seeing done, we'll move to service utilities.
No.
No reporters. Very good. Committee, the whole other meeting we've already covered. That said, great meeting, everyone. Lots of great things to discover this evening. I'm happy to keep an eye on the direction things are going, and thank you all so much for being here. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Second? Any opposition in the hall or?
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mr. Purdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Els? Mr. Aaron?